Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the City Council Workshop of August 10th to order. Would you please take the role, Madam Clerk? And by the way, welcome to your first official meeting.
Thank you.
Cindy's gonna help me out with role today.
Okay.
Becken?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Leo? Leo, I see you, but I don't hear you.
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Truster?
Here.
Ruplank?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any agenda changes to be proposed? All right, hearing none, we'll hear public comment on the agenda items only. Comments should be limited to three minutes. If anyone in the audience wishes to comment, please unmute yourself, get my attention, and tell us who you are and where you reside. I hear CJ Underwood. I recognize you. Jane, you're still muted.
Oh, okay. Now you can hear me, right?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. First of all, I would like to congratulate Erin on her new position. I've known her and her family for quite a long time. And I'm sorry I had to be her first call the morning of her first day on the job with a tree that was down, a city tree that covered my hillside. Scott came over and the matter's been taken care of in the usual professional matter. I thank everyone involved. But I'm calling about something else that really concerns me. I was told over the past weekend that a person was walking on Park Street near Casa Loma, and apparently a vehicle went by, knocked this person to the ground into the driveway near the cottage that has the green, the red garage door. Greg Alcott was at his cottage. He heard the commotion. He went out. The person was not hurt except for a scratch, but this is one of my concerns about Park Street. I understand work is going to begin on North Park Street this fall and then South Park Street. I hope this can be done in a very speedy and efficient manner. I would hate to think we would have any more accidents. Can anyone give me an update on this, or will this be discussed at the meeting?
Yes, Jane, this will be discussed at the meeting. It's a discussion on item 5A. So if you can hang on for just a bit, we'll get to it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to comment?
I would. Guy Durianzo.
Okay, Guy, and where do you reside?
I'm a co-owner of Uncommon Coffee Roasters on Hoffman Street.
Well, sure. Thank you.
And I just wanted to speak about pop-up patios. Is now the time, or do I wait till?
Yeah, I think it relates to things on our agenda. Unless, yeah, I see it. It's 5F. So go ahead, Guy.
I want to thank everybody for allowing us to use the parking spaces in front of our business and other businesses in town. It helped everybody with the COVID situation. I know that these parking spaces allowed for tables and chairs is going to go away October 31st. I'm requesting that we consider looking at these, keeping those spaces until the end of the year and allowing businesses to put tents up in those spaces. I do think that customers would appreciate having a covered area. I would like to put a tent up with heaters. And I just think it would expand the season for everybody. I've talked to other business owners and they also would be interested in doing this.
All right. Thank you, Guy. As I mentioned, this is on our agenda for discussion during this meeting. We are limited, of course, by what the state will allow us. So I think if you can wait around a little bit till we get to that agenda item, I assume can explain where the state is on this right now. I know we're able to expand to November 30th, but I think the tent issue is problematic. Are there any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to comment.
Yes, sir. Dustin Ordway?
Right. My name is Dustin Ordway. I would like to comment on 5G. I live in the Traverse City area, but I'm an attorney and I represent a group of local citizens who have a request for administrative review of the Eagle, the state formerly called the DEQ agencies' permit for the 600-foot wall in front of part of the dune grass development. The reason I'd like to speak is that we'd be very interested in having the city join us in that administrative review process if you're interested. Our participants are concerned about safety. They're concerned about it blocking people from walking. We have one participant whose daughter was able to walk by in one direction. The winds changed. She could not get back along the shoreline. And I only wanted to make comments so you have input from us, not to get into discussion. Now, I know that's not the point at this time. We have donors who are funding the activity, so there would be no cost to the city if the city wished to join. We think it makes sense and we hope you'll consider it because obviously Oval Beach Park is one whole boundary, one whole side of that entire development and is used by residents as a place to get to the lake, to walk the shore. So there's a common concern. As I mentioned, it's not a litigation. It's a request for administrative review. The process simply requires an administrative law judge to hold a hearing and make a recommendation. And then after that, the director of Eagle makes a final decision on the permit. And we have a small team who work with me to head up the process, so it would not require any active involvement by the city if you should choose to join us as a party. And by the same token, obviously, we'd be happy to keep you informed through whoever you identify. So I won't go on at this point, and I don't expect I will still be on the Zoom participation. I know you wouldn't expect me to participate later when you have a discussion, but I'd certainly be happy to talk with any of you afterwards if my further input is needed to answer any questions.
All right, Dustin, as we move forward with this, we may wish to contact you and your organization, so we'll take that under advisement and see where our discussion goes today. Any other comments? I'm not seeing or hearing anybody wishing to be recognized. Let me give you one more shot here. Anybody wish to comment?
I wish to comment. I'm Cynthia McKean.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead and tell us where you reside.
Cynthia McKean, 1000 Mason Street, Sagatuck. I have some comments and I'm going to read them, so I make sure I stay within my boundaries. I believe our community has a dilemma. Many miles of public beach for which West Michigan is famous are gone or unavailable. The complicated matters. Way.
Excuse me, Cynthia. You went mute for just a second there, and so we missed some words, so you might want to back up a little bit. And you're still muted.
How about that? Okay, sorry. I don't know what causes it. I'll back up to say by law, the public can walk along the beach between the higher high-water mark on land and the water's edge. Currently, this is blurred by Mother Nature. With record-high water levels, which are expected to continue rising, many places show no sign of any beach at all today. However, over time, the lake will continue to rearrange itself and the right-of-way will reappear. The high water is also causing drastic undercutting of sand dunes, which used to be set back from the beach, but are now rising directly out of the water. The undercutting is causing huge parts of the dunes to slough off into the lake. In many places, the cut into what were once stuff-stable bluffs is so dramatic that homes are threatening to fall or have fallen into the lake. Not surprisingly, landowners are desperate to save their homes. They are doing whatever they think will stabilize their property with or without permits. Tons of huge boulders are dumped over the edge and create a complete barrier to anyone wishing to walk, watch, walk the beach. Huge swaths are cut into existing embankments, giving heavy equipment access to arrange the boulders. No consideration is being given to the public's access to the right-of-way. The boulders roll over the existing right-of-way out into the lake. There is no way people can safely climb over all of these boulders or go out into the water to continue along their rightful pathway, which now remains at the bottom of piles of rocks. Thus, the public's rights are being painted out, one pile of rocks after another. I'm asking City Council to make this situation a project, create a plan that not only honors the rights citizens have to walk on their own beach, but also the right individuals have to protect their own property. Then figure it out and figure out how to make it work. I think this is one of the most important things that you could work on right now. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anyone else wish to make a comment? I'm hearing none. Give you one more opportunity. Identify yourself. All right, then we'll move on to the discussion items. The first item on the agenda is the Park Street North paving project. Kirk, can you lead off on this?
Sure, Ken. The Park Street North paving project was originally scheduled for the spring. That was postponed due to the pandemic. I was in recent contact with the contractor, and obviously, they are a bit behind because of the issues surrounding COVID. I talked with our city engineer, John Moxie at Fleece and Van den Brink, and discussed the possibility of extending that deadline for completion, or rather, to start the project in the spring of 2021 instead of the fall. The contractor said that they would hold the pricing, which we got really good bids, and that was one of the main concerns. The contractor did agree to that. I think it would be in the city's best interest to postpone the paving of the North Street section, mainly because of the fact that the contractors are, at the end of the season, they're already taxed with all the other projects they have going. In my experience, you risk possibly getting a less than desirable outcome when you rush things like that. And also the fact that you're going to need somebody to pay a lot of attention to that section of road. And you're going to be going through a transition here real quick, and I don't think it's in the best interest to try to tackle that. So Mr. Moxie is on this meeting as well, and hopefully he can unmute himself and you can allow him to kind of give his input.
Yes. John, go ahead.
Yeah, Kirk hit all the important points. I will just add a couple. One is that MDOT has taken a very flexible approach with contractors, just recognizing that this, you know, that pandemic is new ground for everybody, not just those in the construction world. So we followed suit when we recommended that we allow the contractor to hold off until fall, and things haven't really changed in that respect. We originally picked the spring because I have found, in my experience, at least with the city, that that area is a little bit more conducive to spring construction. It's a little busier in the fall than the spring. The other part is, if you do get a turn in the weather and you're in spring construction, you know there's good weather coming, where if we, you know, push a little later into fall and you get a turn in the weather, there's really no guarantee that we're going to get the weather we want to give you a good product. So I'm completely on board with pushing off to spring. There's a little bit of paperwork we'll do if that's the decision of council to make that a contractual change, and I think that will be a good thing. The other thing, and Kirk mentioned it, with transition at the city manager position, this is a project that really needs a lot of resident communication. So I think it would be good to have somebody in that position and, you know, working with residents over the winter to make sure everybody understands this is coming. It's going to be a disruption, but we're going to do our best and kind of communicate how that's going to happen. So fully agree with the change if that's the direction you want to go with it.
Okay, Kirk, is this something we'd have to do as an official resolution, or can we just have agreement by consensus here?
If there really is anything you'd have to do, the council wouldn't have to take official action unless there's, if there's not consensus, I guess we'd have to take it to a vote on Monday, but it's just a contractual change on the engineering side. We can, it's something that we could do internally. I just wanted to get council's blessing on it, so to speak. So if there isn't any disagreement with that, we'll instruct the city engineer to proceed with the change order.
Okay. Anybody in council wish to comment?
And I might just clarify, the contractual change is not a monetary change, either on the engineering side or on the construction side. All we would do is issue a contract change to extend the completion date out to roughly Memorial Day next year.
Sounds good.
Garnet, you wish to comment?
Yep, sounds good to me.
Me too.
Yeah, me too. That sounds good.
Mark?
I got a question. First of all, I don't have a problem with postponing it. And John answered one of my questions when he said that it's not going to impact the contract price. But the question is, do we have a window where we can, you know, say, we don't want to, you know, that project has no longer got high priority? I'm thinking once we get the information from Fleece on South Park Street, if we have an opportunity to reallocate those funds to that, meaning that that's a more critical project. And if so, these constant postponements, do they open up the door for us to do that without some type of litigation issue?
Kirk, you want to comment?
Well, the only issue, I guess, John would have to comment on the contractual basis in terms of what the contractor would or wouldn't do if the city pulled out at this point. But what I can tell you is that I know that a lot of the residents on that Park Street North were adamant about we're at a critical juncture up there that if we don't do something with it, it's going to, we're going to have to turn it back to gravel. So obviously, you know, that will be a decision of council, but with the pricing that we have right now, in my opinion, if you were to reallocate those funds, you're going to have to do something to that section of road at some point in time, and I don't think you'll get the pricing like that again. But I'll let John comment on the legality of the contract.
Yeah, I would just echo the comments about the pricing we got was very good. It was under our estimate, which is a little bit unheard of these days. There is some upfront cost that they have incurred in terms of bonds and, you know, doing the things they need to do to get ready to mobilize, so there would be some costs incurred. The other thing I would point out is from a constructability standpoint, it really does make sense to handle North Park before South Park because all of the, you know, the asphalt trucks and everything that need to get to North Park Street are going to be using South Park Street. So there's going to be more wear and tear on South Park Street to do North Park, so I think we're handling them in the right order. I would say, yes, let's do both, but I think we're doing them in the right order.
Thanks. I'd agree with that. Barry, I think you were signaling.
Thanks.
Barry? You're muted.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, especially after Hane Johns and Kirk's comments, I would be in favor of putting it off till spring.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone not in favor of putting it off until spring? All right, I think we have a consensus to do so. That good enough for you, Kirk?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Chris?
I'd like to say, just a little bit follow-up on Mark's question, because I had brought this up before, that I thought we should spend the money first on South Street before we do North Street. So I would say, yes, I agree to move it off until spring of 2021, but I'd like to hold out, wait to see what the Fleece and Van den Brink study that they're doing on Park Street before I would say, absolutely, let's do North first.
Okay. All right. Item number B is the interim city manager. Kirk, you want to lead this off too?
Yes. The I researched and found two potential candidates for council to consider for an interim city manager, and it's extremely critical, I think, that council moves on this quickly. And when I say quickly, I mean, hopefully by Monday night, possibly council could have a decision and come to a vote. The two candidates that I contacted, I think you can see from their resumes that were in the packet, are very well-qualified. The, hold on, bear with me just a second here. Ms. Holman, I got her information from our city attorney. And Mr. Nielsen is a city manager that worked in Paw Paw and Bangor. He also was an interim for the city of Wayland, so he comes highly recommended as well. I talked to both candidates, and Mr. Nielsen can only do, commit to about 20 or 25 hours a week. His cost would be $25 per hour plus mileage. So he's limited in terms of the amount of time that he could spend. Ms. Holman, I contacted her, and her rate is $2,000 per week, which works out to $50 per hour, no mileage or any other, any other payment. And she has committed to however much time it takes, if it's 40 hours a week, 50 hours a week. So it's, you know, it's not on a per-hour basis. It's a flat fee. So I wanted to give the council that additional information, that the two candidates that I could locate in terms of a quick turnaround, they're there for your consideration. So if any other council members want to jump in, then I guess you'd be able to do that.
Okay. What I was thinking of in terms of the process, of course, was do this as a council as a whole, but we could have a discussion here today and then perhaps extend the meeting or extend the meeting on the front end on Monday by an hour and have these two candidates be present, and we can ask questions and kind of get a feel for them. Unless there's a consensus right now to offer this to one of the candidates, I'm perfectly willing to look at either option. So let me open it up for discussion. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely lean towards a full-time interim manager. There's just so much going on, and 25 hours a week with the Nielsen person doesn't seem like enough to me.
Mayor?
Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Kirk. I think they're two excellent candidates. I agree with Barry. This is going to take full time. And do we know, Kirk, how quickly both of these would be able to start?
Kirk? Kirk, looks like your camera's
Looks like maybe Kirk is frozen. I know there's been some internet problems in the area, so it could be he's tuned out for a second.
Okay. Meantime, any other, okay, Jane?
Well, actually, I have a friend on Zeeland City Council, and so when Karen's name came up, I quickly emailed her and asked her what she thought, if there was any red flags. And she gave Karen just a glowing, 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 a recommendation. I can read it to you if you want me to, or you can just take my word for it, but it was a great recommendation. She's very innovative and really on the ball, so that's just my two cents. I think there's no way we can do this with a part-time manager. I mean, Kirk works
I agree with that. That tips a scale for me, certainly, in her direction.
Right. Kirk's working 60 hours a week, so I can't imagine how anybody could do this in 25 hours a week, so.
Yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, I have to agree that I think we should offer the position to Karen Holman. Just, I'm sure Larry Nielsen would do a great job, but he's limited to hours, and who knows what that'll mean on the back end. It's limited to how much time he can commit us in the long run, where Karen seems to be a little bit more open to basically work as long as we need her. I've been through this process three different times. My experience tells me that when you have someone that you want to go with, you grab them because they don't stay around very long, and there's not that many available in the state of Michigan, especially in our, in our area. So I'm comfortable with working into an agreement with Ms. Holman.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn.
Garn, go ahead.
I support that as well. I'd rather have someone full-time who's focused on us. That would, I would totally support her.
Thank you. Ollie? What's your feeling? You're muted, yeah.
Sorry about that, Mayor. Both candidates look qualified, so I think either one would be a good choice.
Okay, so we have a consensus, I believe, and we haven't heard from Kirk yet as to when Ms. Holman could start.
I just, sorry, Mr. Mayor, my internet connection dropped, so I had to call in via phone, so I just got back on. I didn't hear the conversation, but I guess you're asking when Ms. Holman could start?
Yes.
She said that she could start pretty much immediately, so if the council made a decision on Monday, it would be realistic to get her in probably right away Tuesday, Wednesday, which would be not a moment too soon.
That'd be great. Good. Counsel, should we go ahead by consensus and say we're going to approve this on Monday? Invite Mrs. Holman to join us for a portion of the meeting at least, so we can get to know her a little better?
Mr. Mayor, yeah. Yep, Louis, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so there's a contract involved, so you might want to get that contract draft to her, so if she has any questions, she can contact Kirk prior to the meeting.
Good point. Okay, Kirk, you want to go ahead in that regard then?
Yes, I'll have it prepared, and we'll have it on the agenda for Monday.
Excellent. Good work. Next is the city manager executive search firm question. Kirk, you again?
Yes. Also, what I did was go out and solicit three firms for council's consideration. The MML, Mr. Walsh's firm, and also Amy Sel Talent. Those are three firms that have done executive searches in this area in the last year. Mr. Walsh's firm just recently did Douglas. Amazingly, for council is to, at this point, at least to hopefully decide on a firm and engage them, so at least you have them on the, in the queue. These firms have a lot of other projects going on, so at least you could get them in place. But I think it'd be in the city's best interest to probably not do the selection process until after the election, since we have multiple candidates running. I think you'll have a better, a better pool of candidates, probably after the November election. So, but I would encourage the council to at least get a firm engaged and get a contract signed, so they can start the process and get things in order.
If we were to dedicate the next council meeting to presentations from these firms, would that be soon enough?
Yeah, I think, I think if you did it in September, I think it would be good. It's just I wouldn't want you to wait until after November and then try to go get a firm, because they may have three or four other projects. projects in line and you may be out until, you know, February, March, so that would be the only urgency I would see.
Okay, how about doing that, council? Yes. Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Kirk, can, can you make that arrangement as well?
Yes, now, are, are you looking to have these presentations at the next, at the Monday council meeting, or you want to have them sometime in the, in, you know, before the end of September?
I'm talking about the next workshop, which would be
Oh, yes.
The 24th, I think.
Yep, we can get that arranged.
Excellent. Okay, any other comments, council, on searching for a search firm?
I'd like to make one quick comment, Ken. I think we need to give Kirk a lot of credit for putting this together so quick. As I said earlier, I've been through this process too, too many times with leaving either managers of organizations have been involved with either passing away while on the job or, or resigning or just retiring and to pull something like this together for a small community, we're really fortunate that we've got it done expeditiously. And so I just want to comment that Kirk did a great job. This isn't, this isn't an easy process to do and it takes a lot of time, so. Good job, Kirk.
Yeah. Yep, good words, Mark. Thank you. Any other comments on this one? Our next item is council member Peterson's city attorney request. Chris, you care to lead off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At an August meeting, the 24th, I had the date originally wrong. Councilmember Leo made the statement that she had two concerns, one of which was that Jane and Erin were good, good friends and she was concerned about the boundaries and professionalism since Jane was running for city council, so I believe that the, that remark kind of insinuated that these two women would try to rig the election. And at the next meeting, she did not apologize and when I gave her the opportunity to say what her proof was on, she didn't answer that either. I think one of the things that we have to look at is, at the end of her comment, she said, I just want to put that on the record. I hope Erin stays with us forever and ever, but if she doesn't, I don't want her to run into somebody saying, hey, the Sagittuck City Council on record said that they were concerned that she would rig an election. Same thing with Jane. She's kind of been painted with the same brush and, and I think that we have to look at this as not leaving it where it stands, that this insinuation is out there. I think she went over the line. She doesn't think she went over the line. I think we need to go to Jeff Sluggit. He's given us talks before on code of ethics and conduct. And I think this is one of those things where we need to know where that line is and what is appropriate for council members' remarks, especially in a public meeting and where that line is. So I'm hoping that we would support moving forward on Monday with this to request that from our city attorney.
Perhaps you could handle these two items together. Jane, would you like to comment on your request as well?
Well, it's out there that we should have recused ourselves from voting on, on Erin's appointment and I guess it was always my understanding that we are elected to vote on things and the only time we don't vote is when there's some monetary gain to ourselves personally. And for it to be out there that somehow we did something wrong just rubs me the wrong way. I, I find this to be not acceptable. I think it's very simple. I think Jeff has even given us this in the past and people don't understand that it is our responsibility to vote. And there's only a very, very limited reason as to why we wouldn't vote. And for the, for this person to put on one of our fellow council members' website that the group is obsessed with procedures and Roberts Rules of Order over substance, it was a major miss. If we hadn't voted, that would have been the major miss. So I really think that we need to clear some of these things up as they come up. We, we can't just continue on letting these little hits come in. So it's my feeling that we should get a something from Jeff telling us when we should vote and when we should not vote.
Council? Barry?
Thank you. I hear their concerns. I share them in many ways. And if, you know, we need a primer again from Jeff about, you know, our conduct legally and what we vote on, I'm all for having him come in and whether it's at the next meeting or maybe at the next workshop. But I support their concerns and would have Jeff come in.
Others?
Ken?
Mark?
Yeah, to Jane's concern, I think that's pretty much a black and white or open and shut issue. I think there is plenty of procedure, case law, or whatever you want to call it regarding that question. That would be a very simple thing for an attorney to respond to and probably not with a lot of expense. Regarding the other issue, I recall we had an issue similar to this a few years back. And about the only thing that was left to the council was decide if they wanted to censor that particular council person. They did not want to resend their statement. I think you're going to get the same quest, the answer from this attorney regarding that. Council people have the right to speak. Sometimes we, you know, you're misrepresent or we say things that we, we stand by and eventually the voters make the final decision. So I don't know where I stand regarding pulling the attorney in here. I, I, I think it might be although I get the concern, I, I just don't know if it's going to be productive in nature or be a wise expenditure of, of, of city funds. I'll wait and see what the motion looks like if it gets that far and decide at that time.
Any others? Barry?
If, I'll speak last if somebody else wants to chip in. But, okay, thank you. I was there during that situation that Mark explained years ago and it was a situation where a council member made a false accusation about another council member and the action that the council took was to censure that council member. And so it's part of the record that we didn't feel that the you know, the statement was proper or factual and that council firm was censured. And that's the history of it, so.
Other council members? My feeling is, you know, there's enough of a question between these two questions of, that are being raised to look for some, some legal advice. I too don't want to spend a lot of money on this, but, but on the other hand, I think it's a, it's a serious issue and if we are operating in a inappropriate way, I think we need to know about that. So I would, I'm on that side of the question and I, so I think that is a slim majority, if you will. Counting correctly, I think I'd recommend going forward and getting legal advice on this.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet.
Garnet, go ahead.
So I, I certainly recognize that, you know, folks would like to push this forward and, you know, everyone has a right to their opinion and the words of what they say, whether it's in public comment or not. I think we also recognize as elected officials that we need to have a bit of a thick skin. There's you know, regardless of which level of office that you're in, there's a bit of stuff that happens, communication that happens that you're not always happy with, and that's just the nature of the position. We've known that as professionals when we decided to run for these offices. Personally, I think that we have better things to spend our money on and our time on. We have high water issues still. We have the Park Street issues with safety to individuals. We have all manner of issues, whether it's the gazebo, whether it's finding a new city manager. It goes on and on, and that's personally where I will focus my attention and think that we should focus our attention as well. I'll add to that, the walking on the beach with the dune grass issue. We have a lot more important issues in my opinion to which we need to use the attorney, which, that's the way in which I support spending money to call our attorney in, so that's my five cents.
Anyone else? Barry, did you, Jane, go ahead.
I totally disagree. The question of our election has been, there's been a question about whether our election would be proper. I think elections are probably the foremost thing in everybody's mind right now. There's been a question of whether I have any integrity. There's a question whether our election official has integrity. I think this needs to be done. And to say we're too busy to do this is just inappropriate.
Earl, anyone else? Okay, we will move forward. The next item is pop-up patios and Cindy, are you at the lead of this one? You're muted. There you go.
I think that well, I shouldn't say I think. I know that the state has extended the temporary liquor licenses to November 30th for the pop-up patios. They do have rules and regulations. For example, they cannot enclose them with tents because that would make it an indoor space. And indoor spaces are regulated by the the COVID executive order. However, they also would allow them to convert their temporary license to a permanent outdoor license after November 1. I, I have really big concerns about snow plowing and I think they're, they're pretty valid concerns. So right now, our city license expires on October 31. And there, there is an opportunity for the pop-up patios to have their liquor license extended to November 30 if the city should want to do that.
Okay. Any discussion, council?
Mayor?
Chris?
I think that everybody that has seen them or used them realized that those pop-up patios just saved the day. The weather was, was blessed through the whole summer and I think it just really made the difference between continuing on with the business because of that. I have no problem going to the end of November, especially if we can get some comment, not comment, some promise that they will take care of the snow removal. I do think that the fact that the alcohol can't be under a tent, it's pretty much going to be just tables. And if the people have to move the tables and scoop their own snow, I'm sure they're willing to do that. I'd at least be open to giving it a try till the end of November.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn. I totally support that. I think we give it a try. I think Guy is one of several business owners downtown that's more than willing to do whatever needs to be done to make it work. I think we can, I can ask him aside from this meeting, but I'm sure he'd be happy to kind of lead and provide direction on that with several other, of our other owners. So I fully support extending it to November 30th as well.
I agree with that and I appreciate Guy, if he would take some kind of leadership position here, that would be great. Ollie, we're, or who, Holly, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Chris and Garn. I had spoken with several businesses. Obviously, we have two different issues. We have MLCC and then we have city requirements which are two separate issues, so Guy is obviously talking about adding some tents and some heaters. I just want to commend Cindy. She was really forward-thinking and, and really very responsive on this issue in the spring and I agree with what Chris said. I think these pop-up patios were just they kind of saved the day. They had great energy. We got great response from tourists and businesses and so I just really hope we can continue our spirit of cooperation and creativity and just try some new things as we sort of go into this uncharted territory and give our businesses every opportunity to, to do well and to continue to thrive.
Yeah, I agree and I'd like to see us support whatever we can do to support the tent idea. I think it'd be just great if they could extend the season on both ends by having some kind of enclosure.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet again. I have a question for Cindy.
Yep.
So Cindy, this, so this all came up in the historic district commission meeting for everybody. Cindy, is there anything that we would need to do with HDC as it's still temporary? Do you know?
We would not need to do anything with HDC for the public property. I, I would like to say again, I think maybe Erin, if you scroll down a paragraph on this page, they cannot have tents. They cannot have enclosures that make them resemble indoor space. And that was really clear. I don't know if it got in this letter, but I can certainly find it. They cannot have tents. They cannot enclose. They cannot have a canopy with sides. Yeah, MLCC made that really clear in one of their communications to me, so.
Jane? Yeah, Barry, I'm sorry, you raised your hand before. Let me do Barry first, then Jane.
Okay, I was going to go ladies first, but
No, that's fine, Barry.
Okay, thank you. My concern with Cindy's comments too is the snow removal. A lot of us lived here back in 78 when we had a incredible blizzard and it was in November. So we, you just got to think that it's going to snow in November. And we can't get the plows close enough to do a reasonable job on a pop-up patio when you're running plow through, through the city streets. So there'd have to be some kind of ironclad, you're going to take care of the snow on your side of the street because we can't plow there. So I'd be very concerned that that's regulated so that they are responsibly taking care of that, that have this privilege. And then Cindy answered my other question about the tents. Now that would, Cindy, I'm thinking that's your top-up bars and restaurants. Oncoming ground doesn't serve alcohol, so they, they could put a tent up, okay, but narrow street. Guy and Steve, you got to help us with the snow removal, seriously. Thank you.
Jane?
Did you want to answer?
No, that's a good answer. I just think that you don't have to go back to 78 to see snow in November. Last year in November, we had a snowfall, a big wet, heavy snow and a snowplow pushing that over onto a pop-up patio is not going to do the pop-up patio any, any good. It will bury it, so.
Yep.
That's my comment about snow.
All right, Jane?
Well, that's what I was going to bring up, is we had a snowstorm. We had 22 inches of snow in the middle of November last year. And actually, I went out with Scott when he was plowing that 22 inches of snow. And people were irate because there was leaves in the street and he had to plow around those. And it was a huge mess because the snow was And it was a huge mess because the snow was so unexpected and so early. So I think we have to bring that into consideration. The other issue is with pop-up patios, when it's cold, there's gonna be heaters. And I can tell you right now from a public safety point of view, Greg is going to be very, very careful about heaters. Propane tanks in the streets, that kind of thing. Power to plug in the heaters, if you're gonna use electric heaters, has got to be, it can't be an extension cord. It has to be a proper power source in the street. So I've had a discussion with Greg about this. So the fire department will be weighing in heavily to these pop-up patios. So it's just a matter of public safety. If there's a propane tank out in the street and it gets hit, could be a big explosion, could be a lot of loss of life. And I know that's not likely to happen, but what if it does? So that's just my two cents.
Good point. Anyway, Mark? You're muted, Dan.
Sorry about that. I, I too am concerned about the snow removal. I think that we have to look to Scott to say what he expects of people regarding the snow removal. I think he has to have a say in this. For instance, Bodys opens at 5:00 and at 4:00 today, remove the snow from their patio and dump it into the street that just got plowed a half hour earlier. Not saying they would, okay? But I'm just saying that's an example of things I, I think we need to, to address and be prepared to have answers to same question about do we, if we knock over these, these relatively flimsy partitions, who's gonna be responsible for that? Is that gonna be a, a city expense from a liability standpoint? I'd like to find a way to, to approve them through November, to be honest with you, because that'll give us a feel. Even later in October, it's gonna feel how many people are gonna use these things when the, the temperature gets to be 20 instead of 80. I have a feeling they're not gonna be quite as popular. But I'd like to work with them and keep our fingers crossed that we have a, a mild November. But we need to prepare for the worst-case scenario. I'm not, I'm not interested in extending it past into the December or forward. I think we need a discussion about next year as we get closer to that year. They've been, they've been very popular and, and I'm, I support them, but there's always room to improve. But those are my comments. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? I'm looking here if I have the answer to this. Do we need to then pass a resolution to extend this to the end of November? Cindy, yes, we do. Okay. Will we put that on the Monday agenda? Jane?
I think we need some kind of a workshop or a working group that would work through some of these issues. If we're going to extend it, we need to know how we're going to extend it and have a working plan before we do extend it. I know Chris Peterson and I worked extensively with Cindy to set up the pop-up patios in the first place. We had a roundtable discussion with her and wrote out rules and regulations, some of which people followed and some of which they didn't. But I still think we need to have a plan. We can't just say you can be open till November and hope something falls into place. So I'm more than willing to work with people, but we really need a plan before we pass this.
Barry.
You're muted, Barry.
Sorry. Since it, the already goes to October 31st, we've got a little breathing space. I agree that with Jane that we need to get more information. I would certainly like to have the fire chief chip in. It would help us set the guidelines if we do extend it through November. And we have time to do that. We can do that. Talk about next workshop, take action maybe even before the end of this month, certainly early into October. So I wouldn't want to do it right away at the next meeting.
All right, that's a good point.
Mr. Mayor, can we reach out to other communities and find out what they're doing? Talk to Traverse City, South Haven, Holland.
Jane?
I will say that there is discussion at the state fire marshal level about pop-up patios and what to do with them in the winter. So this, this is being discussed at the state level as far as fire and, and public safety is concerned.
Dan?
Mark?
I believe Cindy has a list of existing businesses that are participating with the pop-up patios. Maybe she can reach out to those to see who's really interested in extending them into November. That may shrink, you know, the workload, for one thing. That is, if she has time. I know she's like, got all kinds of time to do those things. But I, I think that would at least give us an idea of just the number and the people who want to participate. You know, we may, it might end up only being two. I know Holly mentioned it. Well, I've talked to a lot of people. I don't know who those people are. I've talked to people who said they don't know if they are gonna have enough, you know, help to keep them open through September. So I, I'd rather see what kind of number we're working with and, and have a plan and work towards making a, a decision. Hopefully, helping those out who want to stay open with the patios before the end of the month.
That makes good sense. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
I had visited with Guy and Christine and like Jane said, we had worked on some of that. I'd be more than happy to come up with some plan and people that should be included and things we need to cover.
All right. Thanks for volunteering. Let's move forward in that fashion. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to stay involved.
Okay. So the two of you were kind of operating in tandem last time we did this. You can stay on that point.
Okay.
Good enough. Next item is Lake Michigan Beach Frontage Obstacle Attorney Letter. Kirk, you wanna just give us a couple of words of background here?
Well, the city council instructed me to contact the city attorney regarding this issue about engaging in this matter at the state level. So I took the council's direction and had Attorney Cliff Bloom prepare this communication to you. If Cindy wants to maybe jump in and comment too, that's good. But I was doing what I was instructed in the letters before you.
Okay, Cindy, anything?
I, I guess the only thing that I would have to say is the ordinary high watermark does not move when the water moves. So if the ordinary high watermark is covered with water, then there's no place for the public to walk. And it doesn't have to do with the property owner. It has to do with the ordinary high watermark as it's been established.
And, and there's water, right guy, way over the high, normal high watermark, right?
Yes.
This seems to be like a lost cause to me. Barry? You're muted.
Sorry. I thought that Cliff Bloom gave us an excellent analysis of what's going on, gave us a couple of options. But, you know, the high watermark, that's always gonna be disputed and all that. But really, the issue to me is how were those items installed? Were they permitted? Did they get the scrutiny? And our legal advice is that because everything was happening so fast, things were put in without approvals or approvals after the fact. And all we're asking, or they're asking, is just to have an administrative review of the permit. And that doesn't cost us anything. It brings it into focus. And if the administrative judge says, well, you know what, this, just the way it is, we've exhausted our appeals. I don't want to put any money into it, but this wouldn't cost us anything. And so I, I am promoting that we do a letter or a resolution to EGO to support the administrative review. Just at least give us one good look instead of something that's got shuffled out during an emergency. And let a judge administratively review their permit.
Counsel? Mark?
Thank you. Well, I think we might have some expense. Barry, because the attorney says that it's not clear whether Sagatuck would have a standing to appeal on its own, join an existing appeal, or simply file a letter of resolution of support for the appealing parties. So I, I think we'd have to make that determination. That determination came that we in fact can support and appeal and a resolution is acceptable and we're within good standing. I, you know, I probably won't have a problem supporting it. I was hoping that attorney would stay on the line to see if he apparently is doing this in other places other than in Sagatuck, maybe, maybe not, to see if there are other communities like ours who, who did write letters of appeal or supporting or resolutions to support appeals. And I don't know if Cindy knows anything about that. So I guess that's the first thing we'd have to do before we just go ahead and, we want to make sure we're on firm footing, legal standing on it. So that's my comment.
Thanks. I, I don't believe Mr. Ordway is still on the line. I don't see him. Are you?
No, he said he was gonna bail.
No, I, I know that. I just wondered if he was one of the full numbers on the bottom. Barry, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, you know, I, I misspoke there. We already have expenses to it. So, you know, it is costing us something, but not a high expense. But this is our one square mile, a mile of beach, and people come from all around the world to walk that beach. And I, I believe the administrative judge will make that determination, whether we have standing. And really, all we're, all I'm asking is a resolution to support the review of that permit.
Mayor.
Chris?
Uh, Kirk, do you know what the timeline is when this resolution would have to be there? Should we decide to do it when the administrative judge will be hearing this?
I do not. I thought, actually, at one point in time, I thought it was, it was already expired.
That's what I had thought too. The, the only question I would have, and, and again, we'd need legal advice on that, is should we join the appeal or send a letter of resolution? And the judge does not rule in, in that favor, would then we, because we put our support behind it, be included then in any type of lawsuit that would then probably be entered into? That would be my question of, if we step in, can we step back out or would we be sucked into the whole thing?
Good question. Barry?
Yeah, I can add a little bit of light. I've been looking into this. And my understanding is that the administrative judge has not made a determination yet. It's coming up pretty soon, though. I believe the group that has done the original appeal for review, I think it's gonna come up, maybe the judge is gonna even if, gonna consider that. It's maybe like Monday or Tuesday. But they, they have legal ways they can stretch it out another couple of weeks. But again, I'll, if we just are supporting, my understanding, if we're just supporting the review of the permit, we're not involved in any kind of lawsuit. And I don't think if they ruled against it, that we would jump into it. I'd just like to find out if that is, you know, if they just put it in and nobody looked at it.
All right. Anyone else on this? Do we support putting a resolution on Monday's meeting?
I, I could support it if we had a legal opinion that we have standing to issue such a resolution. I might, by, in reviewing some of this, I, I thought that there was a deadline for, to file the appeal. That usually means there's a period of time after that filing date to submit you know, supporting documents, you know, like letters of resolution or something like that. I, I could be wrong. I, I thought the deadline was coming up that they had to appeal. I thought that's what maybe you shared with me at one time, Barry.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just, again, they're just asking for review of the permit.
I get it. I get it. But our attorney's in a letter just says, he does, he's not, it hasn't been determined if we have standing to even send a resolution of support for the appeal. According to this letter.
Yeah, I think the administrative judge will make that determination if we have standing or not. And if he says we don't have standing, he throws our resolution out the door.
Well, and if that's the case, I'd like to hear that from, if we're an attorney.
Yeah, and then, Mr. Mayor, you may, I'm asking maybe to let Cliff call Dustin Ordway and get, you know, the facts about the actual request for review so that Cliff can give us, you know, knowledge based on, you know, information based on knowledge.
All right, we willing to go that far?
I, I am. I think there's enough local concern about this to, to pay it some closer attention. But I think we do need some direction from a legal standpoint on, on it. And, you know, in the back of your mind, like Chris mentioned, there's always potential future liability.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Garnett, were you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say I support Mark, what Mark's asking, that we get that direction first before we make a decision. We need a little more direction from our attorneys.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's two things. There's the resolution for the administrative judge and then the lawsuit, do you have standing to appeal? So I think that definitely we need a little bit more direction, but I have no problem moving it forward to find out.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well. Anyone else? All right, let's get some direction. And moving on to the holiday lighting schedule. Knowing last year, we were kind of late getting activities going. Now is really the time we've got to think about getting our holiday lighting project underway. And a couple of questions need to be answered. One has to do with whether we reconstitute the Holiday Lighting Committee, which last year was kind of under the aegis of, I think Chris and Jane were involved in it. Not Jane, Chris was, very definitely. And then the, the question of budget, what we have available. Chris, do you want to make a couple of comments here before we go further with it?
Last year, I think we were all disappointed with the way the decorations turned out. I remember coming downtown and turning the curve and seeing the guy putting them up with a ladder. So by that time, though, we were too far into it to be able to do too much. But we made a, we made an agreement on the committee. We would definitely make it look better. It has to look better. Otherwise, people aren't gonna continue to donate and people aren't gonna come. So what I, what I have talked to Catherine about is whether we get the committee together for maybe just one more meeting. But I think we need to go back to Nick and say, I know you want to put the lights up now. What are you gonna do to heat, to do the canopy? We have to have it go higher, whether it's globes or things. And, and we don't want to hear about, you don't have a cherry picker. We don't want to hear about, you have to have a licensed electrician. Do all that, but come back to us with a plan in a week. And then I think at that point, the budget that we have, we already have, I believe, 15,000 left over. And in addition, we have our, our own budget. I think we just need to make it right.
I would agree that, you know, the business community really supported us strongly last year. They're willing to put their money into this. And I think we owe them a really spectacular display. So I'd like to see that happen. And I'd like the committee to, again, take ownership of this. It's a, it's really a community project.
I don't see a long committee. I just see giving the direction to Nick and then having him come back. It shouldn't take that long. Should maybe have the answer back in a week and then we can move forward.
Everybody okay with that?
Mr. Mayor, this is Kirk. Can I jump in real quick?
Here.
There's a couple of There's a couple of issues you got to be aware of is number one, the committee no longer exists. That's expired. So if you're going to reform that committee, you have to approve that resolution again and lay out the groundwork. It might be simpler and easier to just have if there's, for example, three council members that want to be a working group and kind of lead this off, it would be definitely more efficient that way. Cause by that time you put the committee together and get the boundaries, what the committee is going to do, it can get a little bit out of hand, but we could put, definitely put that committee back on and get it going again, or you could just have some members of the council put their heads together and be an independent working group and bring information back to the council. That would be the quickest way, in my opinion.
Agreed.
There is nothing to prevent that independent working group from calling in business people to a meeting and kind of act as a committee, right?
Well, it's, I mean, when you have a working group, it's, as long as the council is, there's consensus to say, there's this many people is going to go out and work on this. Three members are not a quorum, so it's not a committee that has to have open, filed the Open Meetings Act and stuff like that. You're just basically and it was very similar to just what you just did with the pop-up patio. You had a couple of council members were going to kind of take the lead and bring some information back to council. The thing that you have to be aware of is that three members of council or anybody like that doesn't have the ability to speak or make decisions on council. What they would do is bring information back to the council to take action.
Yep. Well, Chris, if you're okay with that, I'm okay with that. And we get two other volunteers from council and move forward. Chris?
Yes. If anybody'd like to volunteer, I know kind of one of the, the things that came about really showed the, the issue we had was when Councilmember Leo's husband put that in. So I think if she could be on it, that would be awesome. And then whoever else would like to be involved.
Holly?
I, I think Nico and I are two separate people, so I'm not, I'm not sure that I want to be involved in it. So.
Okay, I apologize. Anybody that wants to do it, then if you contact me, we can go from there.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Next item on the agenda is public comment on any issue. So if anyone in the public wishes to make a comment, please unmute yourself and get my attention and tell us who you are and where you reside. So.
Hi, Ken?
Yes.
It's Catherine, 428 Butler.
Okay, Dan. Yep, go ahead.
Hi. Perhaps I should have spoke up at the beginning. The council should know that I called Chris last week and I spoke with both Mark Becken today and Ken Truster about the Christmas lights. And having been part of the committee last year, I concur, the end look was not what was the desired look from the beginning. I want to suggest to Kirk that some of the members of the committee were also big donors. So I would not want to discourage the city from including people like Chris from Kindle, because there were donations from Culver Street business owners. So I agree with Chris that you need to let the vendor know ASAP that there has to be a better plan and either product added to hang from it, because that was a song and dance as far as I'm concerned. And I can say it because I'm not on council, that he didn't want to invest in a cherry picker because that upset the bottom line of his bid as far as the cost he was putting in. And two, for 20 years, they had overhanging lights when Felicia Fairchild oversaw the draping of the trees. And all of a sudden he comes up with these ordinances and guidelines that were prohibitive. So I'm not buying into any of that. But I would certainly include the people that were vested in the project last year. So it doesn't look like, for me, I, you know, if you want me on the committee, fine. If you don't, that's okay too. But there were some big donors and I wouldn't be so dismissive. The second thing I want to speak to is the issue, which I was unaware of, that Chris brought up relative to a council person putting something negative online and whatnot. I certainly support Garnett relative to saying that we have a lot of big issues. Having said that, I think it is wrong to allow anything to fester in our community that besmirches a council person or a city employee or the relationship that anyone, council, resident, et cetera, may have that is perceived to be unprofessional. If that festers, it'll run. And I find whatever happened years ago, I was around then, it's so many years ago, its application is not relevant because no one even knows or remembers unless you were on 15 years ago, who or what it was about. So I think it would behoove the council to get a fresh view so that the new members of council are aware of the integrity with which we must have and respect of those we work with. It's not healthy as a group process to let that stuff go on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. I mean, anyone else? Dan, raise your hand. Dan Fox?
Yeah, I should have gone, I should have gone before Catherine because she said many of the things I was going to say, but I'll just add, you know, one of the things I learned as a parent, and I think it applies to people as adults as well, is that you ignore bad behavior at your peril. And if you ignore bad behavior, you can pretty well expect that behavior is going to continue. So. Oh, musical accompaniment. I said, like Catherine, I, I, I endorse taking a look at this, having some sort of legal counsel, legal opinion. You know, questioning people's integrity and God help us, questioning the integrity of the election process in this year of all years is so far over the line and so far removed from whatever quote unquote, the need to have a thick skin that it bears your attention as much as any of the many other issues that are always in front of the council bear your attention. Turning, turning a blind eye to this is, is not a good move, is not a good move. So again, I endorse what Catherine said. I think this is smart. Quite honestly, I'm disappointed that an apology, a voluntary apology hasn't been made, but that's not my decision to make. So anyway, thanks for the, thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
I would like to make a quick comment.
Right.
I'll work with Cindy and Chris. I just emailed both of yous. I'm available anytime to, to help move that forward. I'd like to make a decision on this sooner than later because if things heaters and or tents, whatever are, are to be ordered, they all, they all have lead time on them. So, but I will, I'm available anytime. I appreciate your help.
Hey, anyone else wish to speak? Jane Underwood? Jane? No, you're still muted.
Okay, unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Three points. First of all, having known Erin and her family for many years, I have the utmost confidence in her. Secondly, I'm sorry to hear that South Park Street is being pushed back. I would hope that you would listen to the council members who were concerned about this. And third, I'm one of the many people in this community who have walked the beach from my cottage to friends cottages in Shorewood over many years. And I take exception to the fact that some people have put in these huge rocks to stop people from walking the beach. If they had only built their homes farther up like the homes in Shorewood, they would not have had this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else? Hearing no other requests, then let's move on to council comments. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No comment today. Amazing.
Holly?
Um, I just want to quick give a shout out to Saugatuck Public Schools who went back to school this week. I know it was a lot of hard work for Liz, Mark, Tim, all of staff, teachers, anxious parents. Hopeful that we can make it through. I know that they have pardon? I know they have backup plans. Kudos to all. Great job. And I also want to congratulate our merchants and retailers for changing and thriving in, in our first COVID summer, even as high water threatened. And I just hope that we can do whatever we can to help people make the changes that they need to make on the, in the coming couple of months. Thank you.
Garner?
Yeah, a couple of things. The recycling surveys went out. The business survey went out Tuesday. And the resident survey went out yesterday. So those will be out. I'll send reminders out to folks. I think it is late next week, like the 17th or 18th. So that's moving right along. I thought you'd like to know that. All of the managers in the respective communities got those notices out right away and they were wonderful to work with and I really appreciate all their help. So if you have not yet completed yours, please do. Secondly, I had the opportunity to attend a presentation by John Vanderbeek regarding the tri-community master plan and the trails, his plan for, his proposal, if you will, for the tri-community trail system. I would like to suggest that we have John come in and share that information with us as well. I think we're well aware that he's putting a lot of time and a good bit of his own money into trying to help preserve a number of the trails and such around here. And I, I think he has a really good, has good energy and it would be worth hearing what he has to say. He, it was a really nice presentation. He had some great visuals. So if we could, that would be my request. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, so to go on track of that, I'd be interested in that presentation as well at one of our future workshops. Can, can you email something in or, you know?
Sure. Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, that would be fine. That'd be fine. I'll talk to John and see what he can forward. Stay tuned.
Okay, Jane?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah. Question for Kirk. Going back to the Christmas of the holiday lighting committee. It, no, follow up with what Catherine had to say and what Chris, Chris mentioned. Is it, isn't there any way we could just reconstitute the committee, even if it's under a different charge? For instance, an advisory group or something, so this can move forward? Or just adopt what we had last year and just limit it to the people who are, you know, members last year? Isn't that something we just, you know, just make a advisory committee, which we don't really, I think we just do something like that. I'm just curious what, what your comments are on that.
You would have to do it via resolution. But the easiest thing really, again, if you just have some council members that are willing to work on it, those council members can go out and bring those individuals into the mix. It doesn't mean that they, and that's what I was suggesting, alluding to in the beginning, is that you definitely would want to have those individuals in town that were involved part of that. It just wouldn't be, it's just going through the process of establishing the committee. You've got to have certain rules and boundaries in that. You've got to have an open meetings act. It just, it just makes it so much more cumbersome when by the time you get everything set in place, you're going to be missing.
I, I thought maybe you were referencing, I, I think we actually gave those that group some powers, decision-making powers last.
No, no, there is no.
They went all on and did that kind of quasi. Okay. All right. Well, at least, at least I think Chris and whoever other council people participate understand that they're not crossing any line by bringing in, you know, other people to contribute to their, to their cause and.
Exactly. And that's what's, that's what's the beauty about doing it this way.
That's good enough for me. I just wanted to get some clarification. Thanks. Other than that, I'm good. Ken, thanks.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, echo Garnet, John Vanderbeek's ideas amazing. And he does a wonderful job explaining it. Two quick shout outs to Doug from Santa Fe Traders for the basketball nets and Catherine for the beautiful flowers at Coughlin Park.
Very good. Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Removed. Second?
Moved by Verplank, second by Peterson, that we adjourn. This is a roll call vote.
Becken?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We had up to 39 people on the meeting today and excellent attendance. Appreciate you joining us.